Good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us for today's Board of Supervisors meeting. Again, as usual, we start promptly at nine o'clock when the satellite clock says so. So if everyone would please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence, we will be led this morning by Supervisor Ashida.
Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, not a God, indivisible, with every being just as for all.
You may be seated. All right, we are going to begin today's meeting by taking up item number one on our agenda, and that's public comments. At this time, members of the public can comment on any item not appearing on today's agenda. Public comment can and will be limited to three minutes. I do have a public comment request form from Mr. Ken Loy. Ken, if you'd like to come up.
So I hear that Mr. Worthley is not here, as it this pertains to an item in his district. My name is Kenneth Loy. The property that we are going to talk to you about is at 12836 Reisley Avenue, Oroce, California. The issue before you is the, is basically regarding a gas line and getting a, getting the county to agree to contact the, the gas company to allow them to install a second meter on a house that I'm converting from a single-family residence to a duplex. I went through all the requirements to split this house from a single-family residence to a duplex. I went through the planning commission, I went through the permits, I got the plans approved, I got it all approved, and then I got, started meeting those requirements. One of those requirements was the gas line. I had to split the gas line. It was one meter before, I got to split it to two meters. Okay? And I proceeded to pay the gas company the $600. I paid, I paid an additional cost to the plumber to come out and make sure that the lines held pressure. Okay? And everything went well. I thought I had the pressure up, and a man came from the Resource Agency and Resource Management Agency to inspect it, and at that time, no, they didn't hold pressure. And that was fine. But while he was there, he told me that even if I got the gas line inspected, even though I got, paid all this money for it, even if it passes, they would not give the gas company the clearance to come in and put in another meter. Needless to say, this came as a great shock to me because I had spent all this money. I didn't know, I didn't know, I didn't question him because he said his supervisor told him that. And yesterday, I went and went through the ladder of going through and meeting everybody, and finally, I ended up with a man named Jake Reaper. He's the director. I got that right, Gene. See, I worked on it. And he said that the reason that they weren't willing to do it is because it was county policy. I'm here to say, hey, folks, if it's county policy, it does not need to be kept a secret. You don't wait until somebody expends thousands of dollars and then shuts him down because it's some county policy that nobody ever told him about. It would have been nice had they told me this was county policy in the beginning. I could have directed my money to other aspects regarding the split and been able to have done something with it during the warm period, whereas now, I, I, I'm basically stuck. I've almost got, I got the gas, I will have, hopefully, get the gas done tomorrow. I've hired a plumber, he says it will hold, and I've hired an electrician. The idea being that I would have the gas to both units, I'd have electricity to both units, and I would be able to rent the property. As it now, it is empty. I can't rent it. Okay? And I'm losing anywhere from $1,000 to $1,200 a month for every month that I can't rent both units. And I think that because I was not notified, and I spent my money, and I acted in good faith, that that county policy should be amended in my case. It's not a question of hazard, it's not a question of anything else. They've been out there on, God knows how many times the county, the resource management people's been out there, nobody said anything about any hazards, they've never talked to me about any hazards, and in fact, it would appear to me that if it had two meters instead of one, it'd be that much more safer. And I resent the hell out of the fact that they tried to blindside me.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Loy. I'll have Supervisor Worthley get in touch with you and see what he can do to help you.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments this morning? Mr. Lehman, either microphone works, I mean, you can take your pick. Now that you've walked all the way over here, go ahead and use this one.
I'm Dennis Lehman, I'm the Building and Housing Manager for the County of Tulare. And I just wanted to update you guys, where cold weather is getting ready to get here. I'd like to, well, you know, good morning, Board of Supervisors, sorry. I'm Dennis Lehman, I'm your Building Official. And we started a program a couple of years ago with the wind machines and ag wells specifically for the winter time with oranges freezing and what have you. Wanted to let you know that we're up on board again, we're, we're ready to go. Every couple, we've done this program for two years, each of the two years, we've had two calls come in the middle of the night, wind machines down, wells down, and we have gone out and done these inspections to get these things hoted up. We have an agreement with Southern Cal Edison, we're in board with their planners and what have you. When we go out at midnight, two o'clock in the morning, we give them a call and they will respond. They have a planner and alignment on duty 24/7. We have their numbers, we've contacted them. It seems to have worked seamlessly. This is all work done before a building permit because we are closed. The next day, each one of the people that have done this have come in and picked up the proper permits, and, and it seems to have been working seamlessly. We have, it's kind of difficult on a foggy night after the rain to find a well in the middle of an orange orchard. We found it's worked out real well to have the constituent or whoever's there to meet us at McDonald's in Lindsay or wherever, and they drive us out there, and we get the inspections done and get these things hoted up for them in the middle of the night. So I brought some extra brochures for you to hand out. We have notified the wind machine companies up and down the highway. We have also notified some of the well drilling companies and the Department of Agriculture and all of the agricultural service industries around here have our brochures, and I'll be going around next week and probably handing them out. We're supposed to be in the twenties tonight, so we may get our call tonight, it usually happens in the beginning of the year. So with that, I just wanted to update you that we're going forward, moving forward with this here. So, any questions?
Thank you, Dennis. It's hard to believe it's already been two years, but I think it's a great program and it's a great service that you can offer to our ag industry. And I know Supervisor Ashida is a citrus grower, I don't know if he has any comments or anything, but I know the board's very happy with this program and appreciate all that you do out there. And best of luck, we will help spread the word.
Thank you.
Have a great day. And try to get those constituents to buy you a cup of coffee when you're out there in the middle of the night, meeting at McDonald's.
They're usually rather frantic.
All right, good deal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
Good morning, Supervisors, CIO, and County Council. Allison Harris, Board Representative. I'm here today to share with you a video that actually was take, a highlight video taken about a month and a half ago at the youth summit that took place, the Youth Challenge Summit that took place, I believe it was October 24th. And so if you'll bear with me, I'll let it play, and you can enjoy. And that was just the highlight of all the festivities. The youth had, over 300 youth converged at the convention center to be both empowered and trained, to be able to go out into their communities and their schools, to do a service learning project. They're currently working on those projects, and we will have the final results in May. But I hope you enjoyed that. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Allison. Nice, nice video, except for seeing Supervisor Cox in it, but otherwise, it was great. Are there any other public comments here this morning? Mr. Crispins, would you like to come forward?
Now that you've given my name, I don't have to tell you my name again. Was there a definite air of money in the air outside there today? Anybody detect that? I'm here today to speak on the lack of a crossing at Road 224, Deer Creek, Terabella. I'm not exactly sure where we are on this, but the last board meeting indicated that the RMA had set a target date or had put the, in the budget to, to erect that bridge and finish in 2016, and there's a big sign down there, out there, that switches, actually, that big sign is, is like a slap in the face to those people down there and to anybody else who wants to use that road. And I find that it's not just those people down there who are being inconvenienced, they are the ones most inconvenienced by it, but not in, but not as far as the rest of the county is concerned. And the convenience of, apparently, is what we live on today. Why would somebody pay 40 cents a gallon more for gas when right across the street it's 12, 40 cents cheaper? Well, convenience, don't have to wait, whatever. So, I, is there a member of the working press here today? Okay. Well, don't misquote me now, because if you just go to the, the amendment agenda and read those, you're going to be misquoting me. So, anyway, I appreciate the, this, there might be a compromise in this thing if, if we can put off the construction for another year, then we can, you know, go ahead and facilitate a crossing at this time. It was, have you ever heard the expression, "The, the hand that held the dagger has plunged it into the back of its neighbor"? That's just the way I felt the last time I spoke here, and, and, and the first one to speak out against any more expenditure in that regard was the person who represents that constituency. That was hard to take. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Crispins. Are there any other public comments this morning? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment period, and I will bring it back to the board for Board of Supervisors Matters, number two on our agenda, and we will start this morning with Supervisor Cox.
It's been a very busy last couple of weeks, a lot of events to attend. Last night, my wife and I were able to represent the board in the candy cane Christmas tree parade. This evening, the VISA Economic Development Corporation has their open house, we'll be attending that as well. And then there are several activities going on over the next week. Saturday, very busy week, I'll be representing the board at three events. The Literacy Center has a appreciation luncheon that I'll be attending, then also the DSA annual event, as well as the Family Healthcare Network on Saturday. That's it.
All right, Supervisor Ennis.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me work through this. This Friday, we'll have the First Friday Coffee in Porterville, it's put on by the Chamber at seven o'clock, and we'll be, in the morning, be giving out some awards to some of the local businesses. Friday night, I'll be going to the Orange Belt Board of Realtors, Installation of Officers for the Porterville area, that'll be at River Island. And then Saturday night, I'll be going to the Porterville Shelter Workshop's Christmas Tree Auction, that's Saturday night at, at River Island. And then Monday night, I'll be going to Terabella to Sutton Pistachios Little Town Hall meeting, starting at 5:30 to discuss the new park they're putting in and get the input from the local community. So that's the big items that are coming up. And also, Family Healthcare will be opening their new clinic in Terabella, the 30th of this month, so looking forward to that. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ennis. Now we'll move on to Supervisor Ashida.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two weeks ago, I attended a groundwater meeting in, at the Heritage Center in Tulare, which was sponsored by the Tulare Irrigation District, Farm Bureau, and a couple of other groups. But what I learned from the meeting, and I was, was not surprising, but everybody's concerned about ground, ground subsidence, the subsidence of ground, that we're losing elevation, the level of our dirt in the valley. Well, there is a direct correlation to the losing of the elevation to the delivery of water, surface water from the state and federal water projects. So we have made, they've been able to make that tie. If you don't deliver the surface water because of the Delta smelt or the salmon, people are going to pump their water, and you're going to have subsidence. So surface water is a very important part of the issue of groundwater, I mean, ground subsidence. Later that day, I traveled to Sacramento, and we had our annual Supervisors Conference. And on Wednesday, we had a water forum, and there were about six counties supervisors on the panel. And what we've decided to do is that we're going to restart the Delta-San Joaquin Valley Supervisors Meetings, which involves 12 counties and a supervisor from each county to talk about the water bond, or what we need to do for the future water in Tulare County. We'll probably start those meetings again in Jan, the latter part of January, and probably the first meeting will be in Merced. You know, after our experience with the state government and the environmentalists and the federal government, the governor's pushing this plan for the twin tunnels to deliver water around the delta so we don't suck up the Del, Delta Bay smell. Well, it's been our experience that even though you build those tunnels, it doesn't mean you're going to get one drop of water through those tunnels because of environmental issues and regulation that comes from the state of California. Most important environmental issue on the twin tunnels is if you divert water before it hits the delta, you create less water pressure on the underground aquifer and the above-ground aquifer, so you get saltwater intrusion coming up the delta. So I believe even if they build those tunnels, they will not get one drop of water through them. So I think that's going to be a discussion point of the 12 counties because apparently the governor's really pushing for those tunnels. And tomorrow, I'll be in Sacramento at the Rural Valley Rural Counties Caucus, which is 33 counties in the state of California. And we'll probably talk about water and marijuana, and that's all I have.
Well, you're going to have a good time at that conference. Hopefully, you don't do any smoking of it. I'll move on to the items I was going to cover. Supervisor Cox already covered several of the events that I will too be attending and hope they are very successful events, the Family Healthcare Network Gala, as well as the Deputy Sheriff's Association Christmas Party benefiting Quea Delta's Neonatal Foundation. Then I also wanted to cover something that's happening today, put on by, or sponsored by Family Services of Tulare County called Giving Tuesday, basically encouraging people to, to give and not be selfish. And for all of, all of those who are into the social media, apparently, it's called a hashtag unselfie. I'm not too into this, and I'm the young one on this board, and I guarantee none of my colleagues know what I'm talking about. But, but this is your way of bringing awareness to a cause you care about or encouraging others to give back. So I really appreciate Family Services and their efforts, and hopefully, everyone can help give back to any cause to help benefit others. That concludes Board of Supervisors Matters for me. Now we're going to move on, and we are going to take up the consent calendar. We're going to pull item number five for separate consideration. Items 13, 15, 20 will also be pulled, and item number 26 will be moved to the untimed portion of today's agenda. The chair will entertain a motion, less those items.
Motion approved, less those items mentioned.
We have a motion by Supervisor Cox, a second by Supervisor Ennis. All those in favor, please signify by voting. Motion passes unanimously, four to zero, with Supervisor Worthley not voting because he is not present at today's meeting. Hopefully, he gets well soon. Consent calendar passes unanimously, less those items that I had mentioned. We will now take up item number five.
Chair, I just need to recuse myself for this item.
Item number five is an item that need, where Supervisor Cox needs to recuse himself. Chair will entertain a motion on this item.
Vote for approval.
Have a motion by Supervisor Ennis, a second by Supervisor Ashida, please vote. Motion passes unanimously, three to zero, with Supervisor Cox not voting and Supervisor Worthley not voting because he is not here. Item passes. We will now move on to the next item on our agenda that we have pulled, item number 13.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is John Hess with the County Administrative Office. I wanted to let you know that the published notice mistakenly mentioned that the action this morning included both the first and second reading. The action this morning only includes the first reading and the setting of the second reading for December 17th. So at this time, I can take any questions about the ordinance.
Any questions from any board members?
No, motion approved.
Have a motion by Supervisor Cox.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Ennis, please vote. Motion passes unanimously, four to zero, less Supervisor Worthley, who is not voting because he's not here. We'll now move on and take up the next item on our calendar, which is number 15.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, Denise Akins, County Administrative Office. Item 15 today is an agreement with Quea Delta Water Conservation District in the amount of $398,448 for a Prop 84 implementation grant. This project was part of a larger group of projects that was submitted to the Department of Water Resources back in 2010 on a grant application, and it has taken a couple of years to roll out the final agreement. Quea Delta entered into the agreement, and now we need to enter into a sub-agreement for our portion of the project. This project will destroy approximately 80 privately-owned wells that are no longer being used to, typically, they're not properly destroyed, and so that provides a conduit for contamination into groundwater. It will also provide two feasibility studies and preliminary engineering reports for two disadvantaged communities, and it also provides for some water quality analysis of private wells throughout the Irwin boundaries. I have a map, if you want to. Well, no, no, it's here, it just needs to be there. So it's, it's kind of hard to see, it's a, the light, let's see if I can make it bigger. The light.
Where'd you get the light?
Green area surrounding, kind of follows the St. John's River from the, the lake up at the top of the blue, and then you can see kind of the light green shading is the Irwin boundary. There is opportunity to abandon wells outside of that boundary if, if the hydrology benefits the basin. So something maybe to the north, to the northeast, that water then would flow under the basin, and it would benefit the basin. So I'll entertain any questions?
Questions, so not, so not inside of the green shaded areas, they wouldn't be able to use those fundings to abandon wells?
There is potential that something outside of the green area could.
I'm talking about inside of the green.
Oh, and the inside the green, definitely.
Any other questions or comments?
No, just, just a must-needed thing, because that is what is affecting our groundwater is these wells and our cap, so very, very good.
I have a comment. These Irwin studies are going on all through, throughout the state of California, and there's been a tremendous amount of funding that's been set aside to do all the studies because the state of California has never mapped its water or it's mapped its, the underground water of communities that are impacted by different pollutants. And I think it's a great idea, we've spent a lot of money, the bond proposals also include money for the Irwens. But the one thing that bothers me is all this study's going on in the state of California, the state of California legislature's not waiting for the results before they start putting restrictions and regulations on groundwater and surface water. So when we finish this Irwin study in five years, we'll probably have 100 regulations before the study's ever finished. And that's all.
That's a great point.
One of the things I thought was ranching that provides funding to cap off some of these, these wells that, you know, and I'm, I'm hoping that we'll be able to help those that are maybe disadvantaged, not have the funding to do it. It was interesting to hear how they actually cap a well, didn't realize until yesterday before Denise explained how they cap a well. I thought, you know, you just pour a couple bags of concrete down it, and you're done, and it's a lot, lot more to it than that. So I'm glad to hear that we'll have some funding available to do some of these private wells, because I think the private wells are probably where we're getting a lot of our problems.
All right, thank you very much, Denise. I agree with all the comments that were made. I think it's a really good thing, and it's an important thing to reduce groundwater contamination, absolutely, but sure hope, like Supervisor Ashida says, that the state actually waits until they have information before they impose restrictions. Okay, the chair will entertain a motion.
Vote for approval.
Have a motion by Supervisor Ennis, a second by Supervisor Ashida, please vote. Motion passes unanimously, less Supervisor Worthley, who did not vote because he's not in attendance at today's meeting. We will now move on and take up the next item. I incorrectly pulled number 20, but it was supposed to be number 19. My apologies about that, so we'll just switch those items around. Item number 19 has been pulled. Jason?
Good morning, Supervisor, Chairman, and Board of Supervisors. This is just an item to ratify a letter that we sent to the Department of Public Health to ask for them to come down and have a discussion with us regarding our local water premacy program. It looks like that we do have a couple potential dates, we're working with the board staff to calendar that meeting in the next two weeks. So I'd be available to answer any other further questions.
Are there any questions or comments about this item, Supervisor Ashida?
Could you explain what the meeting's about?
Yeah, sure. So as a result of our annual audit on our local premacy delegation agreement, the state raised, the state has been redoing the premacy delegations in every county because the last delegation agreements they did were in 1993, and they're somewhat in violation of the federal drinking water standards. So they're redoing these delegation agreements, and so when they came down for our annual audit this year, they, they suggested that they would, wanted to enter into a new delegation agreement with us and remove our jurisdiction to enforce, permit, community water systems in Tulare County and return it to the Department of Public Health at the state level. So that impacts some 61 community water systems in our county, including the three water systems the county oversees themselves. So this was a request to sort of slow down that process and to have a more collaborative discussion with the State Director of Environmental Health, Dr. Mark Starr, and his staff to kind of better understand what are the impacts to our county, why do they, why are they recommending such a drastic change to our program, and sort of see if we could get some common ground with them.
Well, basically, I think the state's taken it back for empire building. Basically, we're able to provide those services locally and efficiently and timely, and I think anytime the state gets involved in anything, it is not timely. I, I support this letter, and I basically think it's I, I support this letter and I basically think it's protecting state jobs and expanding their jurisdiction over water.
Yeah, and I wanted to pull this item just because I think it's very important that we highlight the state's efforts to basically supersede the county and, and take county right, county control away from us and pull it closer to the state so that they have authority over them. You know, when, when you have a problem here in the county, you can pick up the phone or go to the office and talk to someone and then hopefully get the problem resolved. You're going to have to start driving to Sacramento to do that if they take control of this. And anytime we lose local control to a higher authority or a, a further removed entity from our county, I think that's bad policy. And so, you know, I, only thing I would say that could come good out of this would be if the state paid the money to fix every single water system in our county. And if they plan on doing that, by all means, take it because we don't have the money to do it. But we always have to advocate for local control because I feel like we are more accountable to the people of Tulare County than those who are seated in Sacramento in non-elected offices.
And of us beating up the state, there's one exception. We'd gladly, gladly give our prisoners back to the state.
All right. This item is now up for action.
Mr. Chairman, I guess the motion would be to approve item twenty since we pulled item twenty.
Item twenty and nineteen.
And nineteen. And make that motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Supervisor Cox, a second by Supervisor Ashida, please vote. Must have pressed the wrong button, I'm sorry. Motion passes unanimously, less Supervisor Worley, who did not vote because he is not in attendance at today's meeting. We will now move on. Item twenty-six has been moved on to the untimed portion of today's meeting. We will now move on to our timed items, taking up item number three first. Item number three is a request from the Fire Department to conduct a public hearing for fire hazard abatement cost recovery. Hello, Ms. Delman, how are you?
Good morning, how are you Chairman?
Doing well.
Good morning, my name is Cindy Allen.
Oh, name change, wow, okay. Congratulations, Ms. Allen, I'll get it right next time.
Thank you, no, no problem sir. I'm a fire inspector for Tulare County Fire Department. Tulare County Fire Department is requesting the Board to order the costs associated with the abatement of fire hazards to be recorded in the office of the County Recorder as a lien. The contractor's costs plus administrative fees came to the total of five thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty cents for the cleanup of six parcels throughout Tulare County. We request that the county auditor place the cost of the county tax role, on the county tax role, as special assessments. We'll ask the request, the Board to adopt the attached resolution with Exhibit A, the parcel analyst. The contractor's costs came to three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty cents. Administrative fees came to one thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars. Do you have any questions for me this morning?
Any questions from Supervisors? Supervisor Cox?
We did not receive a list this year. And I typically think we look at that list to make sure there's no conflicts of interest. You have a copy of the list of the parcels and the names of the property owners? It did not come?
Um, I did submit that.
It's not. It's not here.
It didn't work on the electronic version.
Okay, if you would allow me one minute.
You have a copy available?
Yeah, Supervisor Cox has a copy handed to me.
Some advantage of not being computer literate.
I would say mostly not, though.
Are you good?
I'm good.
All right. Chair will entertain a motion. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, this is a public hearing. At this time I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone here from the public wishing to speak to this item? Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and I'll bring it back to the Board for action. Chair will entertain a motion.
I'd move for approval. This is just one way that we get people to clean their properties up and if you live close to one of these areas, this is a very necessity. I see it, I see it every, you know, in my area quite a bit, so appreciate your efforts and, so I would move for approval on this.
Thank you, sir.
We have an enthusiastic motion from Supervisor Ennis, we have a second from Supervisor Cox, please vote. Motion passes unanimously, less Supervisor Worley, who did not vote because he is not in attendance at today's meeting. We will now move on to item number four, which is also a public hearing. Thank you, Ms. Allen, appreciate it.
Thank you very much, sir, have a good day.
You too. We'll move on. Item number four is a request from the Resource Management Agency to hold a public hearing to certify that the Board has reviewed and considered the information contained in the mitigated negative declaration. You can keep reading. Go ahead, Mr. Spata.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Mr. CAO, Council, Mike Spata, RMA. The matter before you today involves a public hearing with regard to a proposed zone change by Charles and Tina Thomas from MR dash two seventeen, Mountain Residential, to CO Commercial Recreational in the Kennedy Meadows area. Geographically, the subject property is on the north side of Gorman Road, just west of Kennedy Meadows Road. The parcel size is twenty acres, specifically for lots. The purpose of the re-zone is to ultimately construct commercial storage facilities. This is not a development proposal before you today, it is only to change the zone. From a land use planning perspective, this re-zone will make the property more consistent with the Kennedy Meadows Community Plan. Also, it is consistent with the general plan update, that is to promote these kinds of commercial residential parcels. In terms of SEQA, there are no significant impacts with the mitigation measures that are required. No opposition was received during the SEQA public review process. No opposition was received during the Planning Commission public hearing process. It was approved by the Planning Commission not too long ago. Also, if a development proposal does come forward in terms of a subdivision map, there are requirements as indicated in the environmental document that there will be water quality testing, water quality analysis, and wastewater compliance. On the strength of what has occurred in the administrative record, we would respectfully recommend that you conduct the public hearing, approve the environmental document, waive the final reading, approve the zoning amendment, and then direct the environmental assessment officer to file the appropriate notice with the county clerk. That concludes my presentation.
All right, any questions from Board members? All right, this is a public hearing. At this time I will open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone from the public wishing to comment on this item. Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the Board for discussion and action. Supervisor Ennis?
I would move for approval. I think this is something that would be helpful to the community. I hope they lift into their enterprise fund, they may have to pay a little more for their trash, but other than that, I think it'll be good for the community.
So this is not, this is not a, a zone change to allow for a dumping site or dump trucks or anything?
No, no, but we, we have had some, some people call in because their, their rates did go up due to the fact that we did set up a tax base over there, so. But I'd move for approval.
All right, we have a motion from Supervisor Ennis.
Second.
A second from Supervisor Ashida, please vote. Motion passes unanimously, four to zero, less Supervisor Worley, who is not voting because he is not in attendance at today's meeting. We will now move on to our untimed items and first take up the regularly scheduled untimed item, item number twenty-eight, and then we will take up twenty-six immediately following.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor, CAO, Andrew Lockman, Emergency Services Manager. And I apologize, I'm going to have to get the laptop going here again to keep the presentation. This morning's, yes, please, if you'd be so kind. All right. Before you today is the Emergency Operations Plan for Tulare County and operational area. This Emergency Operations Plan, long in the making and if I don't say so myself, a little bit overdue. I've seen three or four projects start and stop during my time in the office of Emergency Services and I'm very pleased to be before you today to say that this piece of this project is finished. So in talking about revising the Emergency Operations Plan, we've had four primary objectives. The first obviously was to create a more usable plan. Nobody needs any more doorstops. We wanted to make this plan functional and usable to appropriate audiences. Second was we wanted to conform to current planning guidelines. Considerable changes have happened in the field of emergency management since the original plan was written. We wanted to optimize the plan for the end user and reduce redundancies. There were several dependencies in this project, several changes as we went forth, changes occurred in the Comprehensive Preparedness Guide, which is the federal level guidance on how to write such plans and what they need to include. And we have an ever-changing landscape of Homeland Security Presidential Directives as well as changes in the National Incident Management System and National Response Framework. At the state level, we have to comply with the California Emergency Services Act, updates to the state emergency plan, and the standardized emergency management system. So the, the landscape had been changing quite a bit. We actually found a good opportunity when things were relatively stable to get this plan done, that's what we have done. So some key changes in the document, obviously it's by and large, I don't think anybody has had an opportunity to read it from cover to cover, they didn't have to. The key change in the document is we wanted to remove most of the field level guidance. Since the original plan was written, many of the principles of the incident command system, the other day-to-day tenants of emergency management have become standard operating procedures. It was redundant and sometimes contradictory to have these procedures in the adopted Emergency Operations Plan, so we removed them in favor of the existing procedures within the field discipline. We've also restructured the document from a rather difficult to use phased approach that had the user jumping all over the document to try to find the content that they needed to a functional approach. You can now flip open the document, find your section or your position, and have most if not all of the information that you need to do your job. We also added a lot of hierarchical structure, made the document modular for easier updates, and will be integrating in the future additional standalone plans so that we have one source instead of several different binders sitting on the shelf. You can go to one place and find all of them. Some of the key concepts, just to review, a lot of these were in the previous plan, but we've buffed several of them up. Flexibility and scalability, obviously we don't want this plan to pigeonhole us into a certain approach or certain structure. And we want it to work for a very small incident, very large incident, and only come into play when it's necessary. Obviously, our goal is not to, not to impede day-to-day operations, but make sure that if and when we need to go above and beyond the field level, we're ready to do that in the appropriate fashion. We also ensure that we have a good span of control and unity of command, which essentially means that you have one voice that you're reporting, that you're receiving direction from, and making sure that that voice doesn't have too many people they're talking to. So ultimately, at the top of the pyramid is the CAO, going down through department heads and so on and so forth, and down to the city jurisdictions and even down to the field level. We also made sure to implement multi-agency coordination, which is a process that's relatively new to us, but actually bringing the cities, the tribes, special districts into a unified decision-making process as an entire operational area, which is the county and all of the political subdivisions therein. So the format of this plan that I believe you have in your packets there, probably the majority of your packet, is a four, a four-piece plan. Before you today, you have the basic plan, which is part one, the SEMS functional annexes, which is part two. Those two parts represent the entirety of the old plan. Part three is the general procedures, which I don't have in front of you today, and part four is threat and hazard specific contingency plans. So again, part one is the overall concept of operations, your emergency management organization, functional matrix assigning responsibilities within the county, within the cities for various functions, as well as other, in Australian terms of lines of succession, continuity of government, and so on. Part two is your functional annexes, which is most of the document. This is detailed, instructions for each function, for each position, of which there's thirty-seven currently identified, and any specialized job aids than any of those positions can need. So that is what you have before you for adoption today. Going forward, we will be refining the detailed procedures. We have these drafted, they're in various stages of completion, finalization, and most importantly, validation. So we were not comfortable at this time bringing the detailed procedures forward to you as we feel there's still, there's plenty of room for improvement and validation before we formalize those procedures. We also have a variety of contingency plans, which have existed as standalone documents that we will be revising or entirely rewriting to become annexes to the Master Emergency Operations Plan. Really that helps us reduce redundancy, reduce conflicts, and reduce the overall size and volume of all of these plans by incorporating them into a single document so you don't have to, you know, restate the same introductory materials, you know, every document that you write. Some of those plans that will be eventually incorporated would include our mass evacuation, mass care and shelter plan, which are both currently well on their way to being written and finalized, and then several smaller plans in terms of the excessive heat or cold plans as may be relevant today, our storm response procedure, and half a dozen others. I'd like to take a moment to publicly thank all of the contributors to this plan and just highlight the cooperation that we've received. As you'll notice, we have about half of the county departments here. It's important to note that the other half, this is not a negative reflection on them in any way, it's just they weren't particularly relevant to the planning effort. So this is not saying that anybody didn't participate, everybody that we asked to participate did, and we involved at least half of the county departments in doing so. We also involved every one of our incorporated cities, the Tulare River Tribe, our adjacent counties, our EMS agency, the State Department of Public Health, Office of Emergency Services, Fire, Highway Patrol, California Department of Transportation, Local Office of Education, Park Service, and a variety of other federal agencies that you can see there, including the military branches, the Army Corps of Engineers. We did have consultants assisting us with this project, Barbara Foster, Robert Olson. And we also had very good involvement from our local community groups, United Way, Salvation Army, Red Cross, and several others. So that concludes my scripted comments at this time. I'd be happy to entertain any questions or comments from the Board.
That sounded unscripted, Andrew, you did a great job, very natural, very natural. Any questions or comments from Board members?
I have a comment.
Supervisor Ashida?
Once we get this plan revised, I think we need to have a workshop just over it then, after we have our input, bring it back under consent on a later date on our calendar. But there's one part of this plan that I want to throw out to you, maybe not make sense or may make sense, is we're not prone to earthquakes. Our flooding's relatively minor when you consider other parts of the country. But there's one thing I'm not sure we're prepared for is the influx of people from the Bay Area or Southern California that have these major issues. And are we prepared to take those people into our county and provide emergency services?
To answer candidly, I would say no. I would also say that no one else in this region is either. This has actually been a topic of much discussion with the state and the urban areas, the Bay Area and Los Angeles urban areas. We've, we've recognized that the potential influx into the valley could be hundreds of thousands of individuals, and all of the counties have very, very explicitly told the state that we do not have the resources, we don't have the manpower, we do not have the equipment, or do we have the local funds to undertake that? That's fallen somewhat on deaf ears and the state has essentially said they are unwilling to provide the necessary resources to accommodate that. So certainly that's something that we're going to be addressing as best we can with the resources that we have available in the Mass Care and Shelter Plan. But again, to candidly answer your question, no, I do not believe we are prepared at this time. In short of millions of dollars of investment, you know, we're doing what we can to get procedurally prepared, but I think we're still very short in terms of the resources that we would need to accommodate that.
Well, I think it's an important issue that at least we can have conversations about it and develop our own general plan. And hopefully down the road, if we have the funds, that we can identify what the costs are and what we need to do to provide that aid and give the state a budget saying, this is what we need. If this happens, this is what we need for the influx of people from those two regions.
Absolutely. I mean, we will be sure to incorporate in, in the Mass Care and Shelter Plan that's going on right now, so be sure to have that workshop for you.
Thank you. Chief?
Good job, Andrew. You know, go into, what, how old was the report that this is replacing?
The last officially adopted version was two thousand and four. We've had several working versions since then, we had a two thousand and nine and two thousand and eleven working version. However, a recent case law has shown that working versions are a huge liability and that having the final approved version, that makes sure that everybody's on the same page. and that having the final approved version that makes sure that everybody's on the same page is a necessity. I'm not sure if you want to add anything to that.
You know, to address your concern, Supervisor, there have been, there's been at least one statewide tabletop exercise that addresses that exact issue. A significant catastrophic event down south, an influx of folks coming over the grapevine, and there have been some exercises. The bottom line is, we're still, we, like a lot of our other counties, are in a process of recording all of our assets. You know, it's taken the cities some time to get their assets, what's it called, typed? You know, what type of vehicles, what type of pumps, all that stuff. So when we have an emergency event, we all know what each other has. So if I say you needs to borrow a pump, they don't need to go to an outside service. They can call one of us like they've done in the past. We've done a lot in this area. Go into, Andrew, the hazardous mitigation plan, because that addresses your concerns. We know the group, the group of folks that represent all the cities and the county and the tribe, and I'm glad the tribe's a part of this, got together and talked about what are the significant, what are our significant events that would potentially happen in this county? Dam failure, significant flooding events, what I would say would be in the top two or three. And we've developed plans or we've had exercises to address that. Success Dam breaks, and we've got a significant flooding event. It's going to hit Porterville in an hour. Or it'll get, it'll be an hour out to 99, something like that. So where do we send people? Where do we send our folks? And what roads would be available? We're in the process of trying to develop flood maps of prior flooding events to see where the floodwaters have gone and what roads would be appropriate. But we've got a ways to go. But it would be a good idea to bring each plan forward. You know, we've got the joint information plan that Jed Chernobayev has worked on in my office. He's done a good job with it. It's the first plan of its type in this, for this county. But the hazardous mitigation plan might be another good plan to bring forward with the board.
Yes, and the hazard mitigation plan was approved by the board, I believe, beginning of 2011 or 2012, January 24th. I forget the year, it's either 2011 or 2012. And it was very scientific, you know, data-driven analysis by a very unprofessional consulting firm, looking at all of our hazards. And the finding was that, you know, severe weather, flooding, and I don't recall the other ones off the top. I have those hazardous materials through transportation accidents were really our largest threats. So like you said, you know, those are the threats that we have the ability to, you know, to counter pretty easily, you know, in terms of hardening facilities, raising facilities, floodplain management, and then making sure that we have the ability to implement protective measures for hazardous materials incidents. So those are really kind of the biggest hazards. Like you said, we don't have a whole lot of earthquake risks. We do have some. We're probably in one of the best positions in California. It does not make us immune. We actually have a little bit of a volcanic fallout risk. If you want to read that hazard mitigation plan, it is a public document. It actually shows a volcanic ash fallout over the northeastern part of the county. So we're very comprehensive in doing that plan. We address 20-something individual hazards and looking at ways, primarily through, you know, planning, zoning, and other, you know, infrastructure-type projects that would be under the direction of RMA and Capa Project facilities in terms of how we can, you know, mitigate the impacts of these hazards.
You know, this plan is really kind of the umbrella for all the other mini-plans underneath it. And, you know, if you go through it, there's got three pages of acronyms. So we're going to give a test next week on the acronyms.
Well, at least they define them. Typically, our documents don't.
Yeah, and what happens sometimes with these reports are so voluminous that we don't bring them forward in a workshop setting, which might, which is our bad. We'll start doing that more, because there's some good stuff in here. What I like about this, it goes through every person in the E O C and defines his or her roles, which is critical. It would have been helpful if I would have gone to that earthquake class before the December 2010 incident, but it is what it is. But this is a very good document. Again, there would be other documents brought forward, and this document is for final approval. We can, you know, we can go through, we can come back and go through the org chart for the E O C. You know, I think, I think what we learned from the last incident was, one, the P I O needs to be in my office, because a P I O wants to talk to the elected officials. We also developed a, as you remember, we also developed the talking points, what's going on each day. So you folks are familiar, when you're asked by the press, you've got the most current information. We started posting the roads that were out of commission on our website and announcing it via the radio. We hadn't done that before. So we learn as we go, but this is a good plan in terms of just delineating responsibilities and what have you. If you want it brought back in that format, we can do that. So.
If I may, we do have some plans going forward. Certainly, we'll bring a workshop for elected officials and others that you see appropriate to bring in there. We do actually have an online training platform that we'll be developing asynchronous training for, so that folks can log in and take, you know, a computer-guided training, you know, narrated training on this plan and individual components of it. You know, as you discussed in terms of the putting information on the website, the Joint Information System Plan, those are, you know, largely written, just things that we need to work through with the stakeholders, do the training, do the revisions, really get them. So we're very happy and very confident in them, and those will be brought forward under part three is the procedures for your adoption. And again, those larger plans, as you discussed, will be brought forward under part four, which is the contingency plan, also for your approval and adoption. So really, this is an overarching umbrella process of going back over pretty much everything that O E S has done over the last 10, even 15 years, updating it, conforming it, making it more useful, making it modular, putting it in this plan. And a key part of that is getting both councils in your approval at that time.
Mr. Chairman, could I address Supervisor Sheed's question? Because I wouldn't want you to think that we're not aware of that as a possibility, that there could be an influx of refugees basically from another part of the state and that the state is, I don't know, in a sense of denial perhaps about the reality of that in terms of providing us with support. But we are prepared to, in the event that that were to happen, to request the various declarations that we need to frankly bring in the federal government, I think would be the immediate resource we'd have to turn to. And in the meantime, we have, you know, we would do what we can. But we do, we do have that process in place in the event that that should happen, and I think it probably would go forward very quickly.
And the plan that you have in front of you today is, again, the overall process that we would use to manage any incident, regardless of the scale. A small-scale hazmat leak that impacts, you know, 20 homes versus a mass influx of refugees, the plan is, again, designed to be flexible and scalable, defines our procedures, and as counsel indicated, defines when we would issue proclamations and how we would manage that incident until we receive those state and federal resources. And again, we would ultimately continue to own the incident just with the additional resources that we would receive.
Well, I know that Gene mentioned success dam, and that immediately perks Supervisor Ennis's ears. So what were you going to say? I caught you a while back.
It has nothing to do with success dam. Thing that concerns me most is here you have Fresno, Kern, and Tulare Counties. These are your major ag counties in the world. What happens if we get a dirty bomb out there somewhere in the valley and it affects all of our agricultural land? That's a scenario you need to be looking at, too.
We do have radiological emergencies addressed. There is actually a separate plan under the auspices of the Agricultural Commissioner and Tulare County Animal Control, I believe, addressing agricultural emergencies. Again, the framework here provides the overall management structure, but we do have the very, you know, targeted plans for that type of incident. I can't say that a dirty bomb impacting agriculture is something that's specifically been looked at. I know we've talked about radiological and other types of agricultural impacts, but we'll certainly go back and take a look at that as well.
Chairman.
Supervisor Sheed.
I don't think a dirty bomb, they're going to waste one on my oranges, or whatever else we grow here. But it's a big concern for the metropolitan and areas. And Supervisor Vanderpoel and I approached our congressman, what, five years ago, stating that we needed to have some type of plan put in place for those type of events. And we can approach him again, but I think it's critical with all the money that's being spent in homeland security. Why haven't they figured out a plan, what we're going to do in case one of these things happen? And we have all these refugees coming into the valley. Unless they have a place to go and they know where to go and directed, you're going to have the biggest civil unrest and civil war in these rural counties you've ever thought of, because these people are desperate and they're going to be looking at residential areas or rural areas to get what they need to survive. Because there is no plan or direction where these people go. So I think that's the bigger issue that we need to sell to the levels above us on a future plan. But as far as this plan here is, I guess we have something this big.
It used to be this big, right?
I think it'd be very helpful if we do have a training workshop for the electants in the county, including the city councils and city managers, so we understand what the chain of command is, what resources are out there. Just have a county-wide meeting and be your training meeting. Because the elected officials are the first ones. People call, they call the mayor vis-à-vis and say, hey, what do we do? Or they call a councilman, they can't get the mayor. So I think it would be very fruitful to have a county-wide training program on what's in that book.
Well, I'm glad you're interested in the plan, because one of the challenges we have is with the folks that don't want to, they feel like training could be a waste of time. What our employees need to understand is every employee in the county is potentially an emergency services worker. And we've been trying to, with Andrew's help, get as many of those folks trained, especially the folks in the chain of command that are listed in this book. So we'll go, we'll do that workshop, and we'll talk about the role of electants. Because it might be, there might be some disagreement on this board, just about what level of role you want to have. You know, considering that the last event, which I thought was a good exercise, in reality, the flooding event we had December 2010. I remember you and Supervisor Worthley joined us in a discussion about the issues that were going on. And when we have a serious flooding event, the major players are the roads department and the sheriffs. They run the show, and fire helps in, and fire. Those three entities play a major role. The A O C comes into play when necessary, if it rises to that level, or we can actually be in a position to determine where to put our assets on the ground. But we're in the process of developing these individual plans, and we'll go into that. We'll not only talk about the chain of command, but we'll talk about this plan and how the other plans fit in it in an understandable fashion.
I appreciate that, and I look forward to your support with both the local jurisdictions and the state in trying to address some of these issues that have been ongoing challenges for us. So I appreciate your support.
Any other questions or comments?
Just beyond the training, which I think is very important, I support wholeheartedly is the drills. I enjoy being a part just of, you know, watching what's going on. But I think the drills are very important, because that gives you hands-on experience of how to work with all of the different agencies, realizing that when you turn the radio on, oh, wait, we don't have the radio frequency for Woodlake, so we can't communicate with Woodlake. Doing those hands-on things, I think, are very important, too.
We appreciate that, and we actually do have a substantial budget for sending folks to, as Gene mentioned, to the C S T I earthquake course, courtesy of the Homeland Security Grant. We also have an opportunity that recently presented itself. It's a competitive opportunity to send potentially 50 to 60 individuals from within the county back to Maryland to attend the federal level of that course. We do have a plan to restart a progressive exercise series as well, starting with an E O C orientation that is tentatively scheduled for next month for new E O C employees to actually come in and say, okay, here's where it is, here's my phone, here's my computers, here's how I start to function and build on that exercise series from there. We capped off the last series with the Area 55 exercise, and we now have enough planning momentum with this plan and with the mass care and shelter plan and massive evacuation plan to really start another series of those exercises. So we'll be doing that here in the coming calendar year.
I echo the comments of my colleagues. I think they did a great job. But I really do want to applaud you and your office for making a very comprehensive plan and really including all stakeholders, notwithstanding, you know, the influx of refugees or, you know, things that are really beyond our control and beyond our financial capability. But it's really great to see all of, you know, neighboring counties and also all of our cities, the tribe, everyone being involved, because I think that results in good policy. So especially when you're dealing with disasters or emergencies of this scale, you need that. And I think this is a really great effort and a great plan. So thank you very much, Andrew. Appreciate it. All right, the chair will entertain a motion at this time. Are there any public comments? Is there anyone that would like to speak about this? Okay, the chair will entertain a motion.
With approval.
Have a motion by Supervisor Sheed, a second by Supervisor Ennis. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously, less Supervisor Worthley, who did not vote because he is not in attendance at today's meeting. Thank you very much, Andrew, and have a great day. We will now move on to item number 28, last item on our calendar for today before closed session. That's a request from, I'm sorry, 26, a request to approve the Harmon Field Preliminary Industrial Development Plan. Mr. Washam.
Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors, C A O, County Council, Mike Washam, your Economic Development Manager.
I like the sound of that. Let's keep it that way.
I'd like to, before I start, I'd like to introduce Kimberly Wheeler. She's an intern from Fresno State that helped on this project. She, her data gathering was extremely helpful in determining true absorption rates of the commercial and industrial land in Pixley. And I just, she can briefly say what she's studying, but we enjoy the opportunity to partner with Fresno State any way we can, and this worked out as a good fit.
Do you guys have any questions for me? I'm at Fresno State. I'm going to graduate next semester. I have a 4.0, and I think that's why they hired me.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I work for the M C J department. I'm studying M C J at Fresno State.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly. All right, the Harmon Field study. The study was funded by a C D B G Planning and Technical Assistant Grant from H C D. I'm going to start with the application, actually, because the scenario has changed from when this was first applied for. The grant was applied to meet the natural objective of expanding economic development in job creation and retention. Now, when the application was submitted, it was presumed the site would be developed into an industrial park as part of redevelopment plan for Pixley. And there was anticipated expenditures of T C R A funds to be used as leverage for construction financing of the park. But with the elimination of redevelopment, it's compelled further analysis to determine if there are more advantageous ways to leverage this county-owned asset in accelerating industrial development in the Pixley area. Before anything can happen on-site, the airport is undergoing a remediation. The airport is a county-owned facility, and the airport was permanently closed in 1994. Crop dusting activities had contaminated the site, and it's currently going under an environmental remediation. Upon completion of those remediation, the site will be certified by the state for industrial use. Capital's project, the Harmon Field team, is currently anticipating that the remediation, site closure, and the certification process from the state will be completed by the end of 2016. The Pixley Community Plan and Redevelopment Plans. The Pixley Community Plan directs all of commercial and industrial growth to occur in the North Pixley specific plan. The redevelopment plan was to fund the installation of a new and replacement of public infrastructure facilities in the specific plan, including but not limited to the creation of an industrial park. With the dissolution of redevelopment, it's eliminated the funding source for these things, and we have to look at other opportunities. So when we're looking at what to do with the airport after it's been certified, the primary goal is to develop Harmon Field in an efficient manner that will help accelerate industrial development and job creation in the Pixley area. So through our analysis, it's shown that, well, the community plan directs all of industrial and commercial development up to the specific plan along the 99 corridor. Industrial development has been slower than anticipated. What, part of what Kimberly was able to ascertain through her data collection, the absorption rate for the specific plan which was adopted about 20 years ago, they anticipate about eight acres a year would be converted from vacant open space to industrial commercial. In reality, it's less than two acres. So therefore, if you spread that out to the amount of inventory we already have, we've got over 200 years of supply in Pixley for the current growth. So obviously, that's not what we want to do. We need, we don't need more land and more industrial sites available. We need to stimulate development of those sites that already exist, and lack of infrastructure appears to be the biggest constraint to growth. And so, and then we also need to look at funding sources of how we can accomplish that. So our strategy to... So our strategy to accelerate industrial development, we've got to look at the sewer and water capacity, and any infrastructure development requires funding, and the funding at this time really needs to come from grants. Most grants require a local match money. So the strategy should include proposed uses that would generate a revenue stream from, into a special fund dedicated to be set aside for matching funds for infrastructure development grant opportunities. A revenue, an ongoing revenue stream is what we're looking for. The criteria for prospective uses for the site should include development that needs to be evaluated in its infrastructure requirements and impacts. It should not be, it should be a clean, not obnoxious or nuisance type of thing for the community, and it should generate a positive revenue stream for the county. So based upon those criteria, one thing that we thought we should look at would be potential renewable energy on Harmon Field site, because renewable energy doesn't impact existing infrastructure, it doesn't require water, it doesn't require sewer. It's not a, it doesn't emit dust or odor. It will create a positive revenue stream and potential energy savings to the county as well as the wastewater facility plant that's immediately adjacent. So, and it would allow this to go forward without having to print out costly infrastructure improvements to the site to try to get a developer on to do some other type of commercial development. So the process that we're proposing is for a, an RFP to print out with the following requirements, that the development would have a minimal impact, negative impact on the community of Pixley. The project would be subject to the developer entering to a development agreement, sales tax agreements, and that the cost, and this is, this is the big one, the cost of the project design, construction, and operation, and maintenance would be completely absorbed by a developer. That would be the criteria that we'd put out there, and we'll see. So this will just be a win for the county, and we won't be putting our own fines or our own, any of our own liability into it. This is an estimate of some of the potential we have on the site. For leasing the site, we could look at anywhere between $65,000 and $80,000 a year in annual lease fees. If the site was built out to between a 9 and 13-megawatt capacity, which is what the range would be likely to be built there, we're looking at $9,000 to $13,000 a year in annual revenue from the capacity fee. We look at up to about a million-dollar in one-time sales tax during the construction phase. So you're looking at all told over 20-year life of estimated life, and these could go much longer, but just, we always look at a project in realistic terms. You're looking at between $5 and $8 million potential to the county over a 20-year term. So that's really what we're looking for. We want to, your board to approve the development study that we did, and then to issue authorized staff to request a RFP to receive proposals for potential projects for future consideration by your board.
Go ahead, Supervisor Cox.
Three things for you. It's in 2016. My understanding that, that the project was going to be complete next year, does it take an additional two years to get the official stamp from the state that it's clean?
It is anticipated to be, the remediation, the in-the-ground aspect should be completed by 2014, the end of 2014. The Harmon Field team from Capital's Projects has given me that date as to when they think that it'll be certified by the state. The state, that will be out of our hands, out of the county's hands, and that's the date that they give. Now, this plan, what we're talking about, can move forward. We hope that, you know, that it will occur sooner than that, and we can move it forward sooner, but that's the conservative-
So we don't have to wait till 2016 to start moving?
Well, we, I had some preliminary discussions with a couple developers, and they're, yeah, obviously, they can't do anything in the ground until the certification comes by the state. They're willing to, a couple of them are willing to print up some money to secure the land so we can get some revenue off of it even while it's being remediated, so that they've secured the site, and then, then that would step up in amount after they're able to go forward with the project.
Okay. Well, next thing, what I like about this is it does not compete with the private sector. If, you know, I always had a concern that we were going to take county land and do an industrial park. We then become competitors with our private partners. So I like that this does not put us at odds or put us, make us competitors with our private sector. So I think that's a very good positive thing about this. And a comment I had about the study, it sounds like you put a lot of time and effort into the, you know, into the study. You know, you say there's, we're assuming we're changing two acres per year. I think the cities are probably doing more than that, and that land is coming from us, so we might not be counting that. And it only takes really one IKEA to blow those numbers out of the water, so-
Right.
I like the conservative thought, but it really only takes one or two projects. You know, I know Supervisor Sheed has been working very hard on a rail transfer station of some type. That takes, how many acres was that, Alan? 80, 100? It was quite a few.
I think it was like 2 million.
It was a lot. It was a lot of acreage, but it takes a lot of acres.
600 to 1,000 acres.
So it takes a lot of acres. So, you know, the numbers, I like the conservative thought, but it really only takes one big project to, you know, to take up 15 years' worth of your projected land. So even though we might have right now a large number of acres on the books, it doesn't take long or many projects to gobble those up really quick.
Absolutely. The absorption was specifically only in the Pixley. So the two acres a year is in Pixley itself, not county-wide, not uncorporated-wide. So it's specifically what's available in Pixley.
Already zoned and available?
Already zoned, M1 PD, yeah.
Okay, I had a couple of comments for you, Mike. First of all, I think this is really great use of county asset, if you will, in taking a highly contaminated site, remediating it, and then turning it into some productive use. A couple of things I wanted to mention, because it is in Pixley, and the proximity of the project is directly adjacent to residential areas. One thing I would ask is that when we do put out the RFP, you know, when you put up a, let's say it becomes a solar project, and you've got all these panels out there, maybe some kind of buffer, aesthetic, aesthetically pleasing buffer, like a hedge or something around the site, just to make it look nice for the people that are living across the street and don't have to look across and see all these panels right across from their home. I would maybe put that in there. And then the second thing, we talked about the ongoing revenue that this project could potentially generate, and I know that with redevelopment being dissolved, the Pixley redevelopment area does no longer get money currently. Is there any way that a small portion of the revenue generated from this site, because it is adjacent to Pixley, be dedicated to infrastructure in Pixley? Like, I don't know if that thought had been given?
That would be, we, this would be, as we come back to the board with any proposal, if we can set up a special fund that would be-
Okay.
-dedicated for, for whatever specific area. This could potentially be replicated in maybe multiple sites throughout the county as well.
Yeah, and I understand we set a precedent, but I think that that's, that's something we can consider.
And as far as the Pixley community, I've requested that, to give an update to the town council-
Good.
...at its next regularly scheduled meeting, and we can discuss those types of things. So as this moves forward, those considerations will be-
Yeah, that's fantastic. Community involvement and feedback is very important, so I'm glad you've already reached out to them and didn't have to wait until a complaint came from me to get that going. So thanks a bunch, Mike. Appreciate it. Any other questions or comments from board members? Members of the public, any questions or comments about this item? Okay, seeing none, the chair will entertain a motion. This is item number 26.
Move for approval.
Have a motion by Supervisor Ennis, a second by Supervisor Cox. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously four to zero, less Supervisor Worthley, who is not in attendance at today's meeting. Supervisor Cox has one other item he wanted to mention.
Yes, earlier, I recused myself from item number five. I failed to say I recused myself because of two reasons. I have a son who actually works for the organization that was voted on today, and I have a financial interest as well.
Okay. Thank you for that disclosure. And since you took one more opportunity, I'll take another. I'm wearing my UCLA tie today because of a fantastic performance against USC this weekend. That is our rival school. It is rare that I get to wear this and brag. So I got to say two words for all residents in Tulare County. Go Bruins. All right. Two words, go Bruins. All right. That concludes our regularly scheduled agenda for today's meeting. Counsel, do we have need for closed session?
We do, Mr. Chairman. You have items A through K on your board's closed session agenda. I do not anticipate any announcements.
All right. Thank you for attending today's meeting. We sure appreciate it, and we will see you next week.